Good afternoon. We'll be calling this meeting of the New Ulam Planning Commission to order. It's Thursday, September 26, 4:30 PM. First item, we, 2.1 on plot, consider for approval the final plot of the Polco addition.
Okay, the applicant is John Pullman. The property owner is Heiko. You will need to look at the plat to see the legal description for the property. It is under the instrument of dedication. Street address is 227 First South Street. The property location is south of First South Street and west of the bike trail. Status of the plat, City Council approved the preliminary plat with conditions at its September 3 meeting. The deadline for a decision on the plat is December 14, 2019. The land use designation for the property according to the comprehensive plan is industry. Surrounding land uses per the comprehensive plan is also industry. Zoning designation is I-2 General Industrial District, as is the surrounding property. The current site land use is, property is vacant. It previously was used for storage purposes by Hyman Construction Company. Current area land uses include the following: to the west is the bike trail and Pullman Lumber Company. To the south and east is the former site of Hyman Construction Company. To the east are storage facilities and to the northeast, the New Ulam Post Office. Description of what is being proposed is this is a plat of one lot totaling 0.85 acres, intended to facilitate the sale of property from Heiko to Pullman Lumber Company. Status of utilities, water is located on the west side of Pullman Lumber Company in First South Street. Sanitary sewer is in First South Street. Storm sewer is actually located on the east side of the property, parallel to the bike trail, and there is an easement which identifies its location. A park area is not required by the city's comprehensive plan. Status of conditions that were identified at the time of preliminary plat approval, I include the following: pay the plating fee of $180. That payment is pending. Provide an electronic file of the plat in an AutoCAD 2000 or newer format. That file has been provided. And provide necessary utility easements. Those easements have been provided. Staff recommendation would be to approve the final plat since it complies with city code requirements. There would be one condition. The condition would be to pay the plating fee of $180. I would also note that at the time of preliminary plat approval, we recommended to the property owner that they include in the plat a land area where, to the east where the storage facilities are located, and the property owner declined to do so. Attachments include the final plat and an aerial photograph of the property. And then motions are provided to both approve and deny the request.
Okay, thank you. Your wishes?
So Dave, you had, didn't we, we were talking, so the storage unit and that, to combine them as one? Is that what you're saying here?
No, the staff had suggested that they plat it as a separate lot.
Okay.
And this would have been the most economical way to do so. Properties located in the former South German Park are described using meets and bounds legal descriptions, and they can, descriptions can get long and sometimes difficult to follow. And so whenever possible, we encourage people to plat those kind of properties.
And you said you-
And in this case, he did not want to do so.
He didn't want to do so?
Yeah, and we don't have the ability to say you must.
Okay.
It more was a request.
It was just more of a request, okay.
Your wills?
I make a motion to approve the final plat, plot with conditions.
Your motion? Looking for a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second approving the plot. Any other discussion? Hearing done. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Moving down to 3.1, received communication from Tim Raiki, I don't know how to say that, requesting consideration for residential uses in the B-2 Service Business zoning district.
All right. As you can see, the applicant is Mr. Tim Raiki. And then you'll see a bunch of non-applicables on the kind of cover sheet. The reason being is that this item is for discussion purposes only. And if the planning commission believes it would be appropriate to consider allowing residential uses, or would they consider allowing residential uses in the B-2 zoning district? If the planning commission did believe that was appropriate, staff would prepare a more detailed, more detailed information and present that at the next planning commission meeting. But what Mr. Raiki is asking in the first attachment, which is the letter to the planning commission, is he is asking a change in the B-2 zoning district to allow residential uses. Specifically, he is asking for the consideration for there to be a conditional use to allow first-floor residential units in this B-2 zone. He owns a property at 101 North Broadway, which is the reason this is brought up. Currently, that property has four different units. Two on, the two units on the second floor are already apartment dwellings. The two units on the first floor are for commercial purposes. One is currently being used and will continue to be used. The other smaller unit is the one he'd notes in his letter that he's having issues with renting out, and he doesn't see a lot of interest, or he's not gaining, getting a lot of interest in renting that out for retail purposes. So he'd like the planning commission to consider allowing a residential unit in that smaller space on the first floor. The next attachment is an entire zoning map of the city. And what we tried to do here is highlight in kind of pinkish color the B-2 zoning districts throughout the community. But I think for today's discussion purposes, we're trying to focus on the downtown area in particular, rather than in those B-2 districts that are on more of the traffic corridors on the opposite ends of town and along Seventh North. The third attachment is kind of a zoomed-in zoning map of the subject property. Following that, we put together a kind of an informational sheet for you all to consider this item and describe the three different business districts within the city of New Ulam and what their uses are, that they are permitted as it pertains to residential purposes specifically. So really what we're considering here, first of all, is are we willing to consider residential uses in the B-2 service district? Yes or no? So, just to describe these districts just a little bit, in the B-1, that's the limited business district. That district is intended to kind of be that transition zone between residential district and the business districts. And it allows, I guess, it allows different businesses in that, in that district. But they're often businesses that are limited in contact with people. There's no manufacturing typically, exterior display or selling merchandise or kind of retail spaces. In the B-1, we do allow, we do allow residential uses. So like was explained at the last planning commission meeting, the city has a pyramid style of zoning. So all of those R3 uses are allowed in the B-1 district. So it could be anything from single-family through multifamily uses in that district. And then in the B-2 district, the intention of this district is to provide more of a wide range of services and goods which might not, which might be incompatible with the permitted uses in the retail districts. Now, in this district, the permitted uses would be things like automobile sales, car lots, laundries, service stations, repair shops, printing shops, restaurants, offices, bowling centers, bakeries, theaters. But often it limits the amount of people that are allowed to work or be employed in those businesses. So typically, they're smaller businesses in this district. But if, in this district specifically, there's no residential uses allowed at all. Neither permitted nor by conditional use permit. That's the district we're discussing today. The third one, the B-3 district, is designated to accommodate kind of that central retail and office activities and which are of kind of citywide and regional significance with a wide variety of retail options for people to visit. Now, in the B-3, we do, we do allow apartment units as a conditional use. So, but it's not a permitted use. So anybody that wants to have a residential dwelling unit in the B-3 would need to come and apply for a conditional use to do that. So, just a few other notes, so just kind of sum that up. Currently, we allow residences in the B-1 Limited Business District as a permitted use and then a conditional use in the B-3 Business District. And the B-2 district specifically does not allow residential uses.
The B-3 would be like the downtown area where we allowed apartments in the back and retail in the front, am I correct?
Okay, in the B-3 zoning district, you know, in the past, we've approved conditional use permits for apartments on the second-floor buildings. And then with Mr. Bodie's building on Center Street, we modified that to allow a percentage of the first floor to be used for apartments, and he installed two apartments in that building. We also allow freestanding residential buildings, apartments, and city center apartments would be a good example of that. So we allow a range of different types of residential uses. I think what we've been attempting to do is to promote, you know, residential development kind of on the periphery of the downtown area.
It's not covered in the zoning, but it's the conditional use is how we get past that?
It's, it's allowed as a, through a conditional use permit process. So we allow apartment units or apartment dwellings is the term I believe that's used.
And we did one probably about two years ago on First South, wasn't it, there between Minnesota Street and German Street?
Yes, we did.
And that was a former business?
Yeah, that was a conversion.
Four years ago, we did one for Mr. Opitz.
We've done some on buildings in the, in the downtown area on the second floor. I bet we've done, you know, four or five. And in a lot of cases, those previously were used as dwelling units, and then sometimes they've been transitioned into offices, and then their use as offices, you know, the interest has diminished, you know, and so then some people want to convert it back to, you know, a residential unit.
So he could do conditional use if he wanted to, but would rather have us change the zoning?
No, he couldn't.
Okay.
That is only allowed in the B-3 zoning districts. So if you look at the zoning map, that was included as an attachment. You know, the bright red area is the B-3 zone, and the, I'm gonna call it a pink, that represents the B-2.
If I'm correct, the building we're speaking of is this next to the Colts Corner?
It's right across the street from here. Yeah, it's a former Colts.
But right next door to it.
No, that's it.
Domain, oh.
Yeah. And when he uses the term four units, what he's referring to is those are really just four building spaces. It's not actual residential units. There are two residential units upstairs, but one of those units is a business location.
Is it currently rented now as a business?
No.
The one unit is.
One unit is, but one unit is vacant, and that's the one that he would, yeah.
Is this the one closest to New Ulam Tire then?
I think it's the one in the back.
Oh, in the back?
Yeah.
Like the garage or something?
Something in that area, yeah.
You know, I think, John, didn't you look at the square footage? It was 450 square feet. It wasn't a real big space.
It was roughly 34% of that, that main floor space.
So basically, you want our opinions.
Well, no, it's your decision ultimately if you want to proceed with allowing, you know, residential uses, you know, in the B-2 zoning district. And I think what we're suggesting is maybe we initially focus on the downtown area and then go from there.
For the particular reason, this particular case is not requiring a public hearing?
This is just a discussion.
If we were to make a change, it would have to be done by ordinance, and an ordinance would require a public hearing.
Have we had similar requests in the past?
No. Not that I'm aware of. What have you?
Not, not in the B-2, no. I mean, generally, it's downtown in the B-3 district we have.
Yeah.
Well, property on Broadway is worth, worth so much. That property right there and where he's actually talking about the apartment isn't worth squat for a business. But the problem is, how do you move forward? Because it's going to come up down the road about, you know, how do we start something and, you know? Is it gonna-
Try to be consistent, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to, that if he could use that for an apartment in the back, but like I said, you know, or maybe we won't get that many requests just because fact is, like I said, on Broadway, I mean, it's worth a lot of money, just especially right there. It's such a nice location. But I kind of get in the back part of his business, he ain't gonna have no activity back there, but.
On the opposite corner of that block, is that not where New Ulam Dental is?
Yes.
And in the buildings between there and New Ulam Dental, or between New Ulam Dental and New Ulam Tire, are there not apartments above some of those spaces right now?
Yes, there are.
Which is also in B-2?
Yeah, but those were grandfathered in.
Okay.
I mean, they're part of the original building.
Right.
You know, that was constructed, and most of those buildings were constructed again prior to 1968.
So there really is a precedent in the area for in B-2, for there to be buildings like this that have apartments?
Yeah. But this is going, his request is different from the standpoint that I don't believe any of those buildings have first-floor apartments at the present time.
That's probably true, yeah.
Correct. So in today's thing, they would not meet the requirements as they stand today after not changed?
That is correct.
Well, I wouldn't want to make no changes unless it has to do with the back part of their buildings. You know, basically, almost like we did downtown. You still got your storefronts up front. That's the money issue, you know, right there. That's the, you really, you know, I don't know. Down the road, we might be facing this challenge where businesses are gonna be cutting off their business in the, in the back and the front. We might have to deal with this all the time now on Broadway, down the road. Who knows? So we maybe want to pursue this and probably put conditions on it for uses of those buildings. I don't know. Or are we gonna open up a whole can of worms? I sure don't want to take a storefront and make apartments out of it. In the back part of it, I could probably see.
Or second story.
Or, well, of course, second story, and you know, you got all your new developments anyhow, and they're gonna be second story. You got businesses right below it. I mean, all your new development areas are apartments above and businesses below.
Right.
But you hate to have it right where prime downtown, it would be apartments sitting right on Broadway versus a business.
Well, I would note that it's, you know, possible to write an ordinance with those kind of restrictions in it, so.
How many properties would we potentially be talking about that could be turned into this in the future for, on Broadway or in that district, you know, throughout our?
Well, probably a fair number. You know, if you look at the zoning map again, that's, it's a lot of buildings. I don't know that all of them would be set up, you know, to accommodate that kind of use.
Well, one I can think of would be the church on First South there, or Second South.
Correct.
Yeah, would be a prime candidate.
The former Episcopal Church, the other one?
Yep.
I can think of a couple other maybe challenging properties that, you know, I don't know their physical address here just at the moment, but, you know, then, then we have them to deal with too. But if we would do it by conditional use permit and case by case and set conditions, but, you know, as long as it'd be in the rear.
Well, with today's change in market, maybe we have to change our zoning every so often, you know, just. Let's put it this way, who would be against it right now if that whole block went and a person put up a nice apartment building with no businesses on the bottom, everybody right here would probably say, yeah, bring it in, we're gonna love it.
Yeah.
But, or would they? Maybe not. Maybe everyone say, keep it, you know? So maybe we gotta pursue it and just say with conditional use permit and try to figure out some wordage where it would work in the back part of the businesses and not take the main floor.
Maybe see a plan from them for his proposed building?
I think, yeah, that, that would be easy to put together.
You know, I mean, bring it back for, you know, maybe we could do a review of his plan and.
Yeah, but I, at this point, what you're doing though is you're setting a regulations in place that would allow this to take place with other B-2 properties as well. And again, we're suggesting starting in the downtown area.
Yeah.
So, you know, while this is the individual that has initiated this action, it impacts other properties as well.
I get that.
So we could say just certain B-2, not all B-2 in the city, just certain ones that they, we could require a conditional use permit for them.
Yeah, you could structure it that way.
They couldn't just do it under our conditions, they would have to have the conditional use.
Yeah.
Or structure it that if it's a B-2, say adjoining or across the street from a B-3?
Well, you could do that, or you could be very specific as to the location by legal description. I guess that's something that would have to be reviewed with the city attorney.
So Jeff was talking about, is it possible if he had to direct the staff to put an ordinance together with X amount of conditions?
Yeah, we could do that.
Specify the conditions today?
Well, you, that's one option if you'd like to do that. The other is that we could put some conditions together and bring it back to you for your review.
And not have any, you know, not vote on anything or don't have it back. We might decide at the end that this ain't worth it.
Right, yeah.
Other than to direct them to put something together?
Correct, yes.
But we, we first wanted to find out if this was something that was of interest to you or not. So before we go down the road a little bit further, we wanted, you know.
And we may get feedback saying, don't do it.
Sure.
Or go ahead with it, you know?
Yeah.
Somebody on the streets might come up and have a good reason why not to or why to do it.
I'd say there's interest.
So that there's a little bit of time factor. Unfortunately, you know, this might, this might take three, four months before it comes back.
Well, I would hope that we'd be able to have something back to you by next month's meeting.
So, sounds good. On the larger map, just to clarify, it's all the pink areas?
B-2 is all the pink areas.
It's quite a bit. And again, I don't know if you specify between State Street and German Street from Third North to First South. You know, I don't know if that, like you say, contains enough of what's close to downtown, as far as a starting point?
Yeah, I'd like to talk to the city attorney to find out what would be the best way to approach that.
Right. I guess just an initial impression, if the existence of apartments already is on that side of that block anyway, although, be it that they were grandfathered in, I understand. We're not, I guess, in this instance, entertaining the thought of something that doesn't already exist.
Right.
I understand we're allowing it as a new request in that zone. And so, again, I think it's worth some further, you know, studying and looking into. But I'm just saying, it's, it does already exist there anyway, so.
So all it is at this time is conversation.
Right.
Right.
Well, they still need some direction.
They can give us direction, we can come back with what we don't like and what we like.
Well, it's, I think, the staff, the staff's understanding that you would like us to pursue this further. And so we will put together a sample ordinance with language that would allow for this type of use on the first floor of buildings in the B-2 area, you know, downtown.
So do you, do you have what you need now just from our discussion, or do you need a motion requesting help?
I think we have enough direction from the commission to proceed.
I guess I'm gonna ask the staff maybe look at what other communities have done too, if there's any examples out there, you know? I mean, just possibly.
Okay.
You know?
Sure.
If they've seen challenging properties, that people have come for requests and, you know, if there is anything out there. And we can look at what kind of conditions the other cities, you know, have pursued. What works, what doesn't work. Mark, we do this as, as a possible, put this as an interim, you know, type of conditional use permit? As a case by case?
Well, you, you have that option with the conditional use. It's just that with the conditional use, once you grant that request, it's permanent.
Could we put it as-
It runs with the property.
Could we put it as an interim?
I guess I'd have to check to see if that's been done. I have my-
But we could set conditions and see if it's working and.
Well, you also could do that with a conditional use permit too.
But, okay. Just, just a thought, you know?
Anything else we should discuss on that one before we move on? If not, we will move on to 3.2. Discuss requests from City Council to investigate land uses in the area abounded by South Broadway, 12th South, 12th South Front and 20th South Streets.
Okay, I'd like to begin the staff report under the project description. The City Council at their September 17 meeting considered the request of Arlen and Susan Body to rezone and amend the comprehensive- considered the request of Arlen and Susan Body to rezone and amend the comprehensive plan. Uh, the property that's located at seventeen oh three South Minnesota Street. Um, the legal description of this property is lot fourteen, block forty-eight South. As you may remember, they had requested rezoning, um, of a single lot from I two to B three. An amendment to the comprehensive plan from industry to high density residential. Uh, the request was unanimously, um, denied by the city council on a four oh vote. As part of, uh, the city council's motion denying the request, they, um, directed the planning commission to further study land use in this general area of the community. And, um, in particular, I guess they wanted to look at the possible location of residential uses in industrial zoning district. And so the staff arbitrarily, um, kind of defined an area to be looked at, and that's, um, the area that was described, uh, by the chair. Um, so I guess the staff is interested in receiving further direction and comment, uh, from the planning commission on this matter. I would note that, um, there is a deadline for this decision, and it was sixty days from the date of the, uh, city council meeting, so that puts us November fifteenth. There is a city council meeting on November nineteenth, so, you know, if, um, the commission has a recommendation or some thoughts on this matter, that would also, that would be an appropriate meeting to, uh, kind of use as a, as a goal. Um, I guess at this time I'd just ask, uh, Councillor Mack if he can maybe, um, provide us with some further information on, you know, what the council was looking for from the planning commission, um, on this.
Thanks, Dave. I guess, just reading what you've got written here, you know, you've got Twelfth South and then South Valley to Twentieth, South, South Broadway as part of the study area. And I guess from the council standpoint that night, I was leaning towards Seventeenth to, Seventeenth South and Minnesota Street to, what would it be, Nineteenth South, uh, in Minnesota Street by the former, uh, brick and tile yard? And then from Minnesota Street to German Street to look at that development there as currently it's I two. And if we could look at possibly coming up with designating that area, you know, for some sort of oversized garage or man cave with living quarters in that area. I don't really feel it's a prime industrial site as far as, uh, future development within the community, just my out loud thought. Uh, but, you know, we already have storage buildings and, uh, nothing's been done with the property, um, for those couple blocks. If we can find options, you know, designate just that area. I wasn't looking for like Valley Street where all the other sheds were at this point in time. I haven't been approached by anybody for living there, and no, unless, unless staff has some thoughts on that.
No, I, I think, um, we were, you know, we've listened to the council discussion and it, um, kind of covered, uh, fairly broad area, so we were
Sure.
more looking for something perhaps more specific that would, uh, help us, um, in our, um, analysis, uh.
Yeah, and I'm just thinking we start with this particular area and see if we can find something and we adopt that particular area. And maybe it's, we're talking to all the adjoining property owners, one, there is one majority owner there and then the bodies and probably a handful on German Street. And it'd be nice to hear their feedback, um, and maybe we can work something out.
Are you talking another zoning area, or would you include?
I think leave it I two, but then allow this particular I two to allow, say, some sort of living, uh, space. But then we'd have to put some sort of conditions on there, you know, that you're not gonna come back with to the city, you know, that you've, you know, you've got a known, uh, shredder across the street and there's noise, vibrations, smells, et cetera, you know? And we have to come up with those types of conditions that aren't gonna come back to haunt us.
Yeah, all of a sudden I have a business down there and I've been there for twenty years and all of a sudden somebody comes in, builds five, six of those homes, and all of a sudden the property owners complain because the fact is, the original property owner forgot about what the conditions he signed, and all of a sudden it comes back and says, oh, we got all the, and it raises everybody's eyebrows saying, well, and I'm sitting there saying, oh, this is actually industrial, probably shouldn't have barely built there.
Correct.
Yeah.
You know, and I'm looking at Seventeenth, you know, it's separated by the boundary, you know, there, but across the street we have R, R three across the street currently. It's not as close as to that, you know, recycling center.
Well, for me, I, I gotta be upfront, there's a big key area there that is a big, big, big problem for me. And that's the New Ulm Steel Cycle. Oh, quick, we forget. Oh, we got all the complaints from all the people about all the noise and the explosions and our hoses are vibrating. And that's all in that same, right, the fact it's right in the middle of that. Um, it's gotten a lot better, but when you have that type thing in a residence, if you're gonna have residence in the area. I'm supportive of some of this where they want to have toy sheds and they have a residence, but I'm totally against it in that area where that business is in there. Very interrupt, we, we, we can't forget of all the problems that we had and went through in the, and you, the city council, you, you, you know it, you, you saw it. And they talked about our houses are vibrating and it's too noisy and it's smelly and all that good stuff, so that one is, you gotta convince me that it's good to put a residence anywhere close to that. I mean, for me, with anything within five, six blocks of it.
Yeah.
And I understand that we want to try to create more tax revenue, but maybe this is the wrong way to do it. I don't know.
I think there's places around town that you, places where we could have these toy sheds and we could have a residence, you know, on the ball. And that's something we would have to change to do, but I think there's some out there already, but, uh, but this area is a danger zone for me to even consider it, I'll be just being upfront.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so, wh- why doesn't, um, staff, um, take a look at, um, options, um, for this area? Uh, we can also investigate, um, what, um, other cities have done, and we will, um, thank you, uh, Councillor, uh, Mack suggested that we contact the legal Minnesota cities, so um, we have made some, uh, inquiries, uh, and so we can do that and we can uh, check out some other locations and see what, um, what they are doing, and then we can report back at the next meeting. And then at that time you can, um, make a decision, um, I guess, on, uh, a recommendation to the city council on this subject.
So will this come back, we're looking at it now as that whole area. Last meeting, there was a request for one lot. Is that gonna come back separately?
No, that request was denied, so, um, we're look, we're, we're gonna look at, um, we'll look, appears to be a two block area.
Okay.
And it might come back, you know, that maybe we just look at Minnesota Street and we don't do German Street, you know, as a buffer zone, you've got the, you know, you've got a vacated alley there as a buffer or something. Just, you know. You know, because if we have the manufacturing across the street, you know, directly affracted there. Or we say, we have to have more sheds directly in front of the recycling and further down we might allow something.
And we feel that future businesses have enough other areas to go to that we wouldn't be, you know, I don't want someone to not come in with the business because there's a house across the street or something like that, so. But obviously we feel there's enough other land available for that.
Yeah, we can take a look at, um, our, um, current industrial lot supply.
You know, I mean, we already took a, um, B two there and made a church out of it down on that end, Twentieth, right?
Yeah.
And we've got restaurants and we've got, uh,
And we got the guy that built the house with the big thing across the street there too.
That's on sixteen hundred block.
Yes.
That's.
A little further away.
Yeah, that's across, you know.
Yeah, well, and, and you know what, businesses and churches and everything else are a little bit different because they don't stay overnight, you're not sleeping there. They're permanent, you know.
What's the property on Sixteenth, across the street from that oversized shed on sixteen hundred block, is that I two next to the storage?
R three.
That's R three. So right next door to New Ulm Steel and Recycling is R three, right next to the bicycle trail. There's a vacant land there, right?
There's a half block.
Half block that's vacated there, that's R three, right next to the steel yard.
Yeah, although our comprehensive plan has that designated for industry, so, um, the comprehensive plan and the, our zoning, uh, map don't line up there, so that's some, but.
So someone could build an apartment building there.
Um, someone could build an apartment.
You know, so we already have that right there.
Yeah, but it's, it's supposed to be changed.
Okay. But, you know. You know, we have some cleanup probably work to do or.
Are those lots even for sale?
Yes.
Everything's for sale, okay. Everything's for sale.
Yeah.
So what are we looking at, just tabling this until the next meeting, or we want some recommendation?
We're giving staff some input of.
Yeah, do, do the other, uh, you know, Councillor Mack has, um, you know, provided us with some direction. Do members of the commission, um, is there anything that you would like to see us explore with regards to this subject?
Well, you know, it may come forward that we might have different parts of the town that are wanting to do this too.
Well, so I was gonna say, do we want to limit it to such a small area? I don't know.
I think right now, this is where we have a direction because we have had a timeframe on it of sixty days. And, you know, and we don't want to hold up these property owners, you know, you know, if they want to come up with some sort of use for their property, you know, at this point in time.
Why is there sixty day limit? Because?
What is the request made, you have to make a response.
No, that was established by the city council.
Okay.
I guess they didn't want, um, the subject to be studied indefinitely, and they wanted a direct response.
When they referred it, they also put a deadline on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess I want to go into it with an open mind and, you know, that we've researched both sides and that staff contacts the property owners down there and, you know, see what their feels are. Majority of them say, no, I don't want that on those two blocks, you know. You know, I want to keep it for manufacturing, you know.
Okay, um, we could maybe use some direction then, uh, who are we contacting?
I guess probably the largest owner would be New Ulm Steel and Recycling of the current property down there, right? Mrs. Loonberg.
Mm-hmm.
But she owns a bunch of lots.
Correct.
Right.
Next to the thing, right?
Minnesota Street to, to German Street, she owns.
Yeah. But who else besides?
Do we have some storage units if they would have any concerns?
Okay.
Possibly. There must be what? Four?
Four of them.
So you're saying with, within the Seventeenth to Nineteenth Minnesota Street to German area that we should contact those people?
I think so, just to say, yes, I'd like to see a change, or no, I wouldn't like to see a change.
Okay.
And I guess if we're gonna look at it and, and then go into it from there, you know, then we gotta put certain conditions out there if we're gonna designate that, that area that, you know, it protects staff and it protects the business across the street that,
Mm-hmm.
you know, if we would go that route or not. But I'd like to hear what other cities are doing, you know, if they've had challenges and.
Okay. We'll do our best.
Okay.
Good enough.
Then we shall move down the trail here. Item, um, three point three, city council decision concerning the planning commission matters in September.
Okay, at the September third meeting, um, I'm not gonna repeat items that we, um, discussed as part of, um, the agenda. Um, they approved, um, the request of Jim Sheeman for three variances uh, to allow him to construct a, um, private storage facility on the property at eleven oh six North Spring Street. Uh, they approved the, uh, request of Virginia Suker Molden, um, to allow the operation of a float tank therapy business at ten ten South Ridge Road. And then, um, that completed it for that particular meeting. At the September seventeenth meeting, um, this isn't a planning commission item, but they passed a resolution of support for the continued exploration and planning for the Minnesota River State Trail by the Department of Transportation and the Department of Natural Resources, which are state agencies on the south side of a new and expanded, um, US Highway fourteen from New Ulm to Niklet. And then they, um, set the preliminary twenty twenty, uh, budget levy, and it was not to exceed five percent. And the truth and taxation meetings will be held on December third and with, um, if necessary, a follow-up meeting on December tenth. Um, I believe the levy was, ended up at four point two? Four point two seven. And I would note that, uh, the budget cannot go up from there, but it can go down, so. Um, and then, uh, truth and taxation notices are mailed out to all property, um, tax, uh, owners in the city. You, you know, advising them of what that increase would mean as far as, uh, their taxes are concerned. That's it.
Anything from Heritage Preservation?
Um, we did not have a meeting this month, but we are, uh, meeting up at Herman with the architect, um, shiple representatives and the grant representatives to kind of get a direction on what we're gonna be looking at for the Herman Monument here in the future. That's next Friday. That's it.
That's it.
One other item, if I can just briefly, um, mention, is that, um, our November meeting date falls on Thanksgiving. And so, um, we're, we have tentatively moved the week up, or, I'm sorry, the meeting up a week to November twenty first. At this time, we don't have any agenda items that we're aware of, but um, if there were to be any, that's when we would try to schedule the meeting, obviously subject to having a quorum present. Um, our December meeting falls on the twenty sixth, so we'll have to see how, how that goes.
Good.
That's it.
Anything else? Well, if not, there's no other agenda, agenda items. Again, I'd like to thank all of you for participating. We had a good discussion and we need that in order to solve these type things, so, thank you, and meeting adjourned.